Ginny, you're muted. I'm not sure if you were counting board members or listing them.
I was talking to you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm looking for Mrs. Yanni. There she is. Okay, I see her now. Okay, we're all set.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, as always, for waiting for us patiently this evening. I will call the November 2, 2020 Board Meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for rigid standards, one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all. Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz.
Present.
Mrs. Dempsey.
Present.
Ms. Fox.
Present.
Ms. Hume. I know she's here. I saw her. Where is she? You're muted, Ms. Hume.
Present, sorry.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mrs. Welby.
Present.
Mrs. Yanni.
Present.
And Ms. Gilmartin.
Present.
Nine present.
I'm here too, Ginny.
We missed Jimmy again.
I checked you off. I must have. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second, Jim? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. Before we begin this evening, I know we did acknowledge at a recent committee meeting the very sad loss of Ann Spindler, but I do want to reflect a moment of silence in her honor on the record. So if you would please keep her family in your thoughts. And I would also like to acknowledge Mary Ann Davis, who we acknowledged, I believe, at our work session for being honored as the October Rock Star Teacher by Rocky and Lissa at KRZ. And also, one of our own graduates, Quinn Hemphill, was featured over the weekend in the Scranton Times for her role in killer competition. And I had the pleasure of working with Quinn and getting to know her through the Scranton Shakespeare Festival. So I have seen firsthand, as I'm sure many of you have, her dynamic talents and her sparkling personality, shall we say. She's a delightful young woman, and I'm pleased to know her and wish her all the best. I know she's worked very, very hard, and this is quite an achievement. So congratulations, Quinn. And now we have a presentation from the land bank. You're going to tell us a little bit about the project over on Luzern Street. We have Jesse Ergot from Neighbor Works and Ralph Papas from the Lackawanna County Land Bank.
Okay, Madam Chairman, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna begin and just give you a little background. What we're really here for, besides to tell you a little bit about the West Scranton Revitalization Project, is to ask the school district to forgive delinquent property taxes on a property the land bank recently acquired at the, at the upset sale. The reason we acquired this is because it's part of the Mud Project. And at this time, I will let Jesse from Neighbor Works just elaborate on what's going to be happening over in that area.
All right. Thanks, Ralph, and thanks to the board for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the exciting things happening in West Side. Again, as Ralph said, my name is Jesse Ergot with Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania. Our organization has been working in West Scranton for over five years now. In the last few years, we've been focused on a couple of specific issues. One is looking at bladed properties throughout that neighborhood specifically that we can address. And that also led to kind of a larger effort to develop a neighborhood plan for West Scranton. So we spoke with hundreds of neighbors, door-to-door surveys. We work with some folks at the school district and lots of other organizations to pull together a plan for the neighborhood. And one of the things that kept coming up is how do we take care of bladed properties? The 1100 block of Luzern Street has been a focus of ours for a couple of years, just a block that we, we really wanted to address. Close to the school district, our, I'm sorry, close to the high school, obviously, it's on a very visible corridor that is Luzern Street. And so we, we're looking how to address these bladed properties. The land bank was able to acquire three of those properties a few years back. And then Ralph just mentioned the fourth property that they were able to acquire just very recently. So having all four of those properties on 1100 block of Luzern Street within the land bank's ownership allowed us to, to do, take, you know, a full project, address a project on that block to clean up those lots. And so we did that back in late September, early October. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see that if you've gone by. You know, we really wanted to address the trash and overgrowth there for, you know, safety reasons, clean up, clean it up for, you know, improve the aesthetics over on that, that block. So our first phase of the project was really to acquire and clean up those lots, which, again, as I just mentioned, we did with the work of the land bank. Second phase is really to design a project on those four lots to the best use of that neighborhood and that community. So we'll be certainly working with the residents and the community, reaching out to the school district to talk a little bit more about what we'd love to see there in that, in that little spot across the street from West Scranton High School. So again, we thank you for this opportunity just to talk a little bit about, you know, some great things happening in West, West Side. You know, thanks for the partnership to date.
Yeah, I would just like to also add, I don't know if the school board knows about this, but to date, the land bank has put, or has placed 126 tax delinquent properties back on the tax rolls. They're all in the city of Scranton. And we have additional five in the pipeline right now. And after our next board meeting, there should be two or three more. So that's just some of the accomplishments that we have, that we have done to date. So in this case, we are just asking for, for the school boards to, we're also asking the schools, the city of Scranton and the county to also forgive the two, I think it's 2018, 19, and 2020 taxes on these properties, so the land bank can continue to, continue to function. Does anyone have any questions, or?
Thank you both very much. We did share the documents that you shared with us in our packets, so everyone could see the visuals associated with this project, too. It's really exciting. I so enjoy serving on the land bank and seeing all the improvements as a result.
And we thank you for your service.
And I'd just like to say thank you. I live right off Luzern Street, so I pass the area that you worked on daily on my walks. And what an amazing job, what an amazing difference. So it really is right across the street from the high school and, and very close by to our middle school. So our kids are walking that passageway. You really did a wonderful job. I can't say enough good about it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, you're, of course, welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
Communications to the board, Mrs. Orr.
Yes, executive sessions were held on October 26, 2020, and this evening to discuss real estate, litigation, personnel, and negotiations.
Thank you. Mr. Audi, Solicitor's Report.
Yes, Director Gilmartin, I do have something to report on. As many of you know, the district has been engaged in an IRS audit for quite some time. And I'd like to report that the audit has reached its final conclusion. The audit was about retirees who received a retirement incentive. The IRS called the district on several issues that were done essentially in compliance with a long ago negotiated collective bargaining agreement. This agreement was long before, I know it was before Rosemary's time, and it was certainly before my time. We were all left holding, holding the bucket and trying to fix what was wrong. But as it turns out, the audit has concluded. There's going to be some restitution that needs to be made on behalf of the district. And moving forward, there's going to be some perspective changes on the payouts of the incentives. The main issues were that the employees were given a choice of whether to take an incentive, or healthcare benefits, or some combination thereof. That choice made the event a taxable event. So it wasn't treated as a taxable event for all these years. And fortunately for us, the IRS only went back three years rather than back as far as they could have gone. Some concessions were made on our part. And we're very happy to say that we're putting this behind us finally. We will be making the payments to the retirees along the order in which we've been directed by the IRS to do so. And I'm happy to say that we've met with the, the union. They're aware of the situation, and we're working out how to move forward from here. But I felt that it was important to note that this was coming, this long, this long event was coming to a conclusion by the board. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Ben. I know a tremendous amount of blood, sweat, and tears process. And to, to say it was a long one is certainly an understatement. So thank you to you and Mr. Laffey and Dr. Finan and Mrs. McTiernan. And I'm sure Mr. Castrovinci had a hand in this as well. I, I know everybody really worked hard to come to the best result we possibly could. So thank you.
Thank you. That's true. And I want to compliment my colleagues for, for rolling up their sleeves and really digging in.
And I also thank you to the IRS for working with us.
And they did.
And being supportive of our efforts.
And they did. Thank you.
Anyone else? Enden's Report, Mrs. McTiernan.
Yes, good evening, everyone. And I would also like to thank Mr. Audi for all his work with regards to the IRS matter. And I'm happy to hopefully, we're almost there and to put another issue behind us. So I have some good news, and I'm going to share some student athletic achievements tonight with some of our athletes. So last week, our junior high cross-country team, West Scranton Junior High Girls, won the team championship. And the Scranton High Junior Boys Team won the team championship. So congratulations to both teams. Such great news in the middle of a pandemic. I'm so happy to be able to share that. Also, District Two Doubles Tennis Championships, I believe this is the first time ever, West Scranton Madison Maloney and Mia Butka finished second, winning the silver medal. So that is so great. Congratulations to both of them. And thank you for representing our district so well. And in District Two Cross-Country Championships, there were outstanding performances by two Scranton High student athletes. Sophomore Bella Noriko finished second, and freshman Brian McCormick finished fifth. Both will be moving on to the Cross-Country State Championships in Hershey this upcoming weekend. So good luck to them. And it's so nice to be able to share some good news with all of you and our school community. I also want to share with our school community that this week, our food service will happen on Monday, which was today. And rather than Wednesday, it will be delayed Thursday because of Election Day. And I also want to remind everybody that the distribution sites are Scranton High School, West Grant High School, Armstrong Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, Whittier Elementary, and Sherpa Elementary. And also, I want to remind all of our families that tomorrow, there is no school for the district. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And Missy, as you were speaking, I do want to apologize for an oversight. I should have also thanked the impacted employees for their patience and understanding during the frustrating situation with the IRS. So thank you for all of those who bared with us. PSBA Report, Director Dempsey.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just have a few notes today. The Winter Keystone Exam, PDE, is extending the Winter Keystone Administration window from December 2 to March 31. So schools can use as much time as they need at any point during that testing window to administer keystones in a manner consistent with local health and safety plans, of course. I also want to touch on, Director Fox actually sent this information to me. It's called the Show Them What It Takes Project. Essentially, you ask your legislators to come into your district to kind of show them exactly what it takes to run the Scranton School District. I did bring it to the attention of the board and administration, and it's probably not something for right now, but we can start involving, I know we have really great relationships with our current legislators, so we can at least bring them in, show them, you know, our virtual plan, show them our hybrid, our potential hybrid plan, just to kind of show them what it takes to run Scranton today, current state, so that they can become more of an advocate for us down in Harrisburg. Along those same lines, I've been in touch with Harry Mathias. He's our PSBA advocacy ambassador regarding some training. I've contacted him to see if he might have some time through the end of the year so that he can kind of, he may maybe even be able to attend one of our budget sessions or special meetings to provide some valuable training on legislative advocacy for our board members. Some, Harry also passed along some charter school reform information, just regarding, you know, how, you know, the COVID crisis is exactly the reason to reenact and reach out to your legislators. We know the funding formula for charters is absurd, absurd, but with the COVID issue causing spikes in cyber enrollment, now is the time to show the extreme impact on local taxpayers. You know, they're asking that, you know, we strongly consider pulling together our local charter school data for our school for this year and compare it to past years, and then communicate with our legislator, the, the local impact that Scranton's feeling. So Harry is saying that, you know, he's hearing more and more from, from legislators that something has to be done on the funding. So if we can kind of provide some of the information and to our legislators and how it impacted Scranton, they can hopefully take that down to Harrisburg for, to encourage charter school reform, to, to change that funding formula. Just an update on Senate Bill 530. So this is legislation to protect student victims of sexual assault. It was passed by the House last week and is headed to the governor's desk. This would require schools to remove any student convicted or educated, delinquent of sexual assault against another student enrolled in the same school. The school district would be required to expel, transfer, or reassign the offender to another school or educational program. I just thought this was an important note, you know, keeping our students, not necessarily in a virtual model, but making them feel safe and knowing that this is important and this is on, on the governor's desk to take action. So that's all I have for this month.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Laffey, I saw you nodding your head as Ms. Dempsey was speaking. I think one of the other things we need to put on your plate is gathering some of that charter school data. I'm, I'm sure you'd be willing to help us out with that. So thank you. Michelle, that was really informative. Thank you. And I have flagged a couple of emails as well, and I know we want to try to get some dates together. I've asked Mr. Laffey, we'll touch on this later, to just highlight the, the dates that we have on our calendar in terms of budget, and, you know, we can communicate and schedule some things as soon as we possibly can. So thank you very much. We will now entertain public comment. We will allot three minutes to each speaker. Our union officials will be allotted four minutes. We have done a good job of keeping a, a good level of decorum, and I would ask that you continue to do so this evening. And Mrs. Orr, with that, if you would please call the first speaker.
Okay. First, we have Lynn King.
Hi, Lynn.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight speaking as a parent. I'm also an educator in the district. I had emailed Missy a few weeks ago, just letting her know, I'm sorry, the lighting in my office feels bad. I just realized that, that, you know, I'm concerned for the mental health of my own children and certainly everybody's children at this time. The online piece is becoming very challenging for them. And I was just wondering where we were as far as supplies and things like that in moving back into the classroom. I know it's on the horizon. However, I'm in my building every day. Fortunately, Whittier is open, so I'm going there so that my children can have space here at home. And I don't see any movement in the building towards being ready to go hybrid in the near future. So I was just wondering if anybody could speak to that and let me know if I can have some confidence and feeling that we're moving that way.
I don't really do question and answer during public comment, but I do know many of these items are addressed in the hybrid. Perhaps Mr. Doherty, if you would speak briefly to some of the initiatives that are taken as we move into the hybrid, potentially move into the hybrid model.
Certainly.
Thank you. You, Mr. Doherty, you could go ahead and do that if you want to take a few moments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you meant later. Absolutely. Hi, Lynn. Thank you for, thank you for your questions. You know, it's, really, the buildings were sanitized and cleaned very thoroughly over the summer. So a lot of the buildings now, it's just, we're just kind of waiting to, you know, polish the fire truck to get back into our facilities. We're, we're fairly certain that when we do go back, it'll be on an AB student schedule across the entire district. So that's going to limit the amount of students that are going to be in any given one, you know, any given classroom. But at this point, you know, administrators should be setting classrooms up structured with social distancing to ensure compliance with that. Now, as far as on the maintenance side, we do have sanitizer sprayers that are in every one of our buildings. We did drop off all the PPE for, for teachers. So there's multiple face masks, there's face shields ready for the staff at each building. There's cloth face masks ready for, multiple cloth face masks ready for every student at every building. Our cleaning supplies are in. I mean, we're, I think we're much closer to being ready to go than, than people probably realize. We've been anticipating this moment, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, Lynn, having a daughter that's a senior in high school, I'm also anxious, you know, at some point to get, to get the kids back in the school. So I think right now, everything that we, we kind of could be doing is in our control. I think we're doing a move in the, in the right direction to make sure that when the school board or when Mrs. McTiernan says, yep, we're going back, that we're going to be ready to go.
Thank you, Paul. I apologize for calling this out of, out of order a bit, but I, I know those items are addressed pretty clearly in the hybrid plan. So I thought this was a simple way to get that question answered. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That, that gives me a more settled feeling. Thank you. I haven't seen a lot of that, so good to know.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Orr.
Next, we have Rosemary Bolland.
Good evening. Mrs. Orr, am I out of audio?
We can hear you. Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, directors. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Audi for the good call we had the other afternoon with his team, putting the IRS issue hopefully to rest once and for all. This has been indeed a long time coming. It feels like forever, and I'm sure it feels like forever to this district's team. I can only tell you the number of calls I get regarding this topic, and it is going to be great that this finally is resolved. And I appreciate that very much. On behalf of our retirees, I want to say thank you. Also, tonight, I would like to address the fact that, probably following up on what Mrs. King just spoke to, we have been having, I find, and I hope the team agrees, very fine discussions on Thursday afternoons at 1:00, the district's team and our team and the 32 BJ's. I think they have been extremely productive and very, very informative. We've had outside speakers come in and share with us their knowledge of what has occurred in, for example, New York City schools and the whole New York system. And so we're getting some very concrete information that I hope our district will use moving forward. I'd like to thank the team for that. They are very, very informative for me, and I'm sure they're informative for everyone else. Having said that, because of the spike, keeping us in substantial mode and not even close to what we would call moderate, I'm hoping that everybody will understand that we have to stay in virtual. And I hasten to say, there's something wrong in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and probably across this country. I don't know if it's an issue with people just getting lazy or just not caring anymore, but we're not doing our fair share here. And by that, I mean all of the people here. With wearing masks and social distancing, I think everybody's letting down their guard, and that's not helping the situation, whatever, if ever we're ever going to get back to what we so-called, quote, "normal." Without everybody cooperating in this endeavor, I don't know when our students are ever going to get back to brick and mortar. I really don't. And I think it's vitally important that we do get back there. But we can't do it when nobody is going to cooperate and everybody's silly, and they don't believe the science, they don't believe the doctors. I don't know who they believe. But walking around without masks, without social distancing, getting careless about our behaviors is only exasperating this, this whole situation. And I'm hopeful that people will start to exercise some good common sense, protect themselves, protect their families, and let's get these kids back to school in a safe environment. Let's get our workers back in a safe environment. But that's not going to happen by me saying, wear your masks, if everybody doesn't do their share. This is just an outrage to me. Everybody wants, as Mrs. King just said, everybody wants to get back. Everybody wants our kids back in school because we know that's the best environment for students. But that's not going to happen. It absolutely will not happen unless the adults start acting like adults and setting an example for our students, for their own children, and in their own families. This, this is just, to me, this is unbelievable that something as simple as a mask has become a politic, and it's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. And we have to put that to rest, and let's get that thing moving. We could have fixed this thing months ago if people weren't just trying to be silly and not do what they have to do. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that we can take care of this. And the third thing and the last thing, well, two things. The third thing I want to say, I hope you appreciate the work that our pair professionals are doing in the homes. They have a tricky situation. It's a balancing act for them. I'm monitoring this every day of the week. I call daily. I have reported issues to our district. I'm sure many of you are hearing about it. And it's scary. It's a scary thing to do during a pandemic. And I applaud their heroic efforts on behalf of our students in our district. And I can tell you, these people are scared to death to go into the homes, and I think that's justifiable. I know I'm scared to go into anyone's home, and I'm sure most of you are, too. So please remember, these people, they're doing a fantastic job. And I don't think they get much appreciation around here, and it's time they did. And the last thing I want to say is I hope you've all voted. And if you haven't, I'm going to look online tomorrow and hope to see your pictures on television, going to the polls and voting in person. I hope you voted by mail, though. And with that, I'm hoping Wednesday morning I wake up, if I ever go to bed. I hope I hope I wake up and my candidate wins. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Rosemary. And I, I'm sure, I'm sure I can speak for everyone to say we are very grateful for the work that the paraprofessionals and everyone is doing in service of our students at a very, very challenging time. So thank you.
Next, we have Roberta Jaddick.
Can you hear me?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm addressing you from home tonight where I am safe from COVID. You are also at home where you are safe from COVID. That's why we're not together and while I'm not speaking to you in person. It's why we're not in school buildings. It's why teachers are instructing their students from home where they are safe from COVID. But you know who's not safe? More than 50 paraprofessionals, men and women who were forced to choose between their lives and insurance. Men and women who knew that if they turned down an assignment, they would relinquish their unemployment benefits. It has been said by the administration that the furloughs occurred because there wasn't enough work for us. Teachers, as well as parents, said there was plenty of work. You, the members of the board, chose to believe the administrators. So what does that make the rest of us? Are we telling untruths? Have you, as individuals or in a group, met with teachers and asked what parents could do during virtual instruction? I bet most of you would have to answer no. You were taking the word of people who wouldn't know us if they fell over us in the hall at Scranton High School instead of asking those who work with us on a daily basis, those who know what our strength and weakness, where our strengths and weaknesses lie. I realize we don't need to be in a stranger's home where we might encounter a man walking around in his underwear or where birds may be flying overhead and pooping where they want because that's what birds do to contract COVID. One of my paraprofessional sisters has contracted COVID. She's in the hospital with difficulty breathing. She came down with symptoms before her assignment began. So I guess from your end, a bullet was dodged. But how long until the worst-case scenario happens? And by the way, there is such a house with the birds and an 18-year-old man. Why can't in-home services be done online? Maybe I'm just not getting it. But is it because if we're viral, we cannot build medical assistance, and the district will miss out on potential income received at our expense? If that is the reason, be truthful with us. We're not children. We are adults who would rather face transparency than the web of disinformation that we have been fed. We may not like what we hear, but we will appreciate the honesty. It's not too late to reverse your course. We are not expendable. We are important to our families, our students. And whether you know it or not, we're important to the SSD. Excuse me. I know there is an issue with attracting new teachers. And can you blame them for not wanting to work here? They see how you are treating your employees.
Roberta, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Let me just say, employees are a company's greatest asset. They're your competitive advantage. You want to attract and retain the best, provide them with encouragement stimulus, and make them feel that they are an integral part of the company's mission. Thank you.
Next, we have Barbara Cook. Barbara Cook?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Barbara Cook. I live in Scranton. I'm a proud member of the SFT, and I'm a furloughed paraprofessional from emotional support and the member number 97 of the Minion Club. I would like to thank the HR person, Mr. Castor Vinci, for stating, teachers are underpaid. You saw something, she said something. I would also like to ask Ms. Finan, why a write-to-know letter asking for exact amount given by the CARES Act didn't, is taking another 30 days? When I did purchase order, you go bid, purchase order, acknowledgement, receipt by packing slip. Packing slip matches the PO. Is the order checked in by the invoice matches the PO? And I would just like to know why 30 days extra is needed? And that's it. Get out and vote.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Next, we have Marsha Hurst, but I don't see her on the list, so I don't think she's here. We're going to move on to Matt Loftus.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things. As a parent and teacher, I am certainly looking forward to getting back to school, brick and mortar. But I'm looking at the increased number of cases, COVID-19 cases in Lackawanna County right now, and it's very concerning. Unfortunately, rather than improving, it looks nationwide like it's starting to spiral out of control again. And I ask that with, whatever decision you make, please look at the safety of students and employees and carefully consider that as you deliberate tonight on a future direction. I, unfortunately, I only see the current condition getting worse rather than improving since we started. The second item that I wanted to address is, I'm going to ask that you please consider recalling all of the paraprofessionals. I spoke to this at the last meeting when the paraprofessionals were furloughed, and I sent an email. I think virtual learning would be even more successful than it has been if the Title I paraprofessionals, the learning support, life skills, autistic support, and emotional support paras were present and, and could be part of the virtual learning process in addition to those paras who have been recalled. I think they have a tremendous amount to offer, and, and I think it would only make what we have better until we can get back to a hybrid or a brick and mortar full-time safely. The, the third item is concern over the safety of PCAs and also homebound teachers who are currently working in the district. Right now, they're the only two groups that I believe are going into homes. Homebound teachers have been going in from the beginning of the year, and our PCAs recently started going into homes. And what, with the increased number of cases and the substantial label that we received, I, I would ask that, at least for the immediate future, if the district would please consider a way of offering the services virtually for students or at the very least, consider a way to bring the students into the controlled environment of the school setting where we know it can be sanitized and that the employees and the children would be, would be safe. Again, I think, you know, at some point, we may be saying stay-at-home orders again. I see that happening around the country. And I'm hoping that the district is flexible enough to, to try to maybe reach out to other districts and implement a way that those services would still be offered, but could be offered virtually or, or potentially, you know, I think would be not, not as good of a solution, but if, if necessary, in a school setting where, where we know it's being sanitized and it's safe. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Loftus, I don't know if she's listening tonight, but Ms. Telesco did a wonderful job the other night representing the district of music at the event that was held there.
Oh, she, she is, she is listening. She, she's trying to wrangle our children right now. So I have some quiet, but I will make sure she hears that. She'll appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Chris.
I see there's a Maria Hurst here. Is Bill, if you would let her in?
Yeah.
Yes, can you hear me? Is it Maria or Marsha?
It's Maria. Maria Hurst.
Thank you. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Hurst. I am a teacher at Scranton High School, and this is my 18th year of teaching. And I wanted to speak tonight on the idea to remain virtual. I do believe this is, in my opinion, the only option to consider at this point with what we're all seeing, with numbers on the rise. I'm not sure about anyone else, but I am finally starting to know people that are actually contracting the virus and are suffering some serious health effects from it. But the biggest thing I wanted to talk about was that in 18 years, I am seeing the same, if not better, results from my students. Attendance for me is through the roof in my classes, both for my virtual Google meets and also for those participating and working daily, whether it be answering the Google Classroom attendance questions or working on the Apex Learning Platform. I know we did receive an email from Mr. Coyle talking about upcoming events just today, and he did mention how smoothly the online learning platform is going for us at Scranton High School. So I do believe that a lot of the hurdles that my students normally have to overcome to get to school are not issues for them any longer. Yes, perhaps they are. Those hurdles are replaced by other things that they have to deal with, with this new way of doing things. But I cannot say that my students are performing at a lower level with not actually being in school. So, and to speak to the teachers, I certainly don't want anyone to get the impression that this is easier for us. It is certainly not. I know from my own experience, after having taught for 18 years, of course, you tweak your things every year, and you find more material, and you improve your lessons. But I am working as much as a first or second-year teacher. I'm working till all hours at night. I'm working on the weekends. And I can't say that I've ever, that I've had to do that in several years. But I'm happy to do it, and I enjoy doing it. And I can do it with a clear and focused mind, knowing that, you know, I am safely in my home. So I just ask that you please continue to come down on the right side of things, as this board has been doing, and we all thank you for that. And just to mention that schools that are going back and forth, they're not getting any traction when they're, they're virtual. Then they go back for two weeks, and then they're, then they're virtual again, and they're hybrid, and there is. We already got our groove. We are in our rhythm. The kids know what to expect. We've worked out the bugs, and the kids are rising to the occasion. And I have to say that I believe that we are as well. And I know in my building in Scranton High, we have excellent support from our administrators in this situation. You know, Mr. Coyle, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Montoro, they're right there for us with any issues we could be having. You know, especially in the beginning, when we're all trying to learn this and work the bugs out. So please continue to come down on the right side of things as you, this board has been doing. And we greatly appreciate your consideration for the health and safety of not just us, but the students. And as I said, the last time I spoke.
Maria, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much, and have a good evening, everyone, and stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Maria.
Next, we have Suzanne Fury. Suzanne?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. The question that is on my mind, of course, is the virtual versus returning to brick and mortar. And I, we've heard a lot of having supplies and, and things of that nature. But I am wondering, what is the actual plan? Okay, not the one that's on the paper. But for me, as a teacher, I am thinking, from the moment the child actually arrives at the school, what is going to happen until that child is no longer in the school? And I have not heard anything about that. I am also very concerned about having sufficient maintenance personnel to be able to clean. We have a very large building near Larmstraw, and not very many people maintaining it. How can they possibly clean and sanitize every day? I'm thinking about common areas like doorknobs and door handles and things of that nature. How is that going to be accomplished? I, I can't really see that happening, nor have I heard anyone even address that. Thank you for discussing the PPE and the disinfectant. I don't have anything in my room. The only thing I have seen, we have a couple hand sanitizers that have been placed in our buildings. Our building is open. There, we have quite a few people in our building. And I'm concerned as to how it's going to be maintained every day. As a primary school teacher, I'm thinking, of course, about the bathrooms and how that will be. There's no social distancing for a six-year-old. They're not going to be thinking about that. And I'm imagining if we go back brick and mortar, how will they social distance? Are you planning on having an adult near the lavatories? Because if that's not going to happen, then you should not expect social distancing from primary children, actually, from most children, I believe. I am wondering, I, I am looking for the minute-by-minute, what's going to happen? How will the children move in the building? Will the, another big issue for me is temperatures. If the children, if anyone is allowed to come into the building without having a temperature check before they even step foot in, I think we are inviting a whole lot of trouble. That needs to be addressed before they even walk in, adults and children. Technology, I could spend a lot of time talking about the issues we've had in our building. We, at this point, I am looking for details. I, of course, would love to be with my students, every one of them, in brick and mortar. But I have deep concerns. The cases are rising. We seem to be in a surge, and I really have lots of questions. I appreciate that there are no easy choices here, and, and everyone is on overload right now, trying to get this all accomplished. But I wonder, at this point, whether we are really ready to go back brick and mortar with, we're going into the winter, we're going into weather that we're in closed doors.
Suzanne, I'm sorry, your time is up.
They are my concerns. And, and if I can say, I also have concerns about our paraprofessionals being in homes, that they have no idea what's going on. Thank you very, very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Next, we have Holly Mead.
Hi.
Hi, Holly.
Okay. After working for nearly four years on public education funding, I have realized the people we vote for and elect affect my classroom and, most importantly, Scranton students on a daily basis. A school district is made up of a community. In that community, you have five groups of stakeholders. Group one is the students. Group two is the parents. Group three are the teachers and the support staff. And group four, the administrators. And group five are all of you, the school board. I'd like you to ask a question, and I'd like you to write down your answers to review later. What top three things have you done for the students in the Scranton School District? Or more specifically, what top three votes have you actively voted on that made a positive impact on student learning in the Scranton School District? I'll give you a minute to write them down. Now, I'd like to ask you what top three things you have done for the teachers and support staff in the Scranton School District? Or specifically, what top three votes have you personally had that positively, positively affected their employment satisfaction? I'll give you another minute to write those down. I'll give you another minute to write those down. What top three votes have you made for our administrators and school board to further the educational outcomes of the district? I'll let you write those down. I wanted you all to really think about your position and the power that you have. The reason I speak at every board meeting is because all of you are the power players, the most important stakeholder in that group of five, whether you know it or not. But at times, I often think that this board is so focused on the recovery plan, we are forgetting about who we really are trying to recover for. You're spending so much time on repairing and reconfiguring our schools, you're forgetting about the people that are inside them. Recently, the Scranton Times reported that teacher shortage in Scranton, which affects every single student every day. They also reported the starting salary in Abington is $53,000. That's the same amount a teacher working for twelve years makes in Scranton. You need to get actively involved in this issue of retaining good teachers. It's just like a building slowly eroding and falling apart in front of our eyes. The same exact thing is happening to the infrastructure of your staff. Look back at what you wrote down. Did any of those votes help to build a quality, professional, developed, retained staff?
Holly, I'm sorry, your time is up.
The last thing I'd like to say is when you vote here each night, do your homework, do your research, obtain it from a variety of sources, and maybe you should think about that and start voting to build up the staff in Scranton, not to ignore it. And you're letting it all fall apart. Please go vote tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
And last, we have Vivian Williams.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Um, as many of you, my days long, 5:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and many times by 11:00 p.m., my mind is still going. It's hard and tiring. And I hope what you take from me, who desperately wants to return hybrid, knowing that it's probably not possible, to heart when I tell you that the district needs to do more if we stay virtual. It's soul-crushing and often makes me think, why am I even speaking tonight? When I write emails past midnight, through those days' tears, and get a, "Thank you for your email and your input. We continue to analyze the feedback and receive from our community and try to make improvements." Makes me feel as a parent, my, my voice isn't being heard. I understand the numbers are a factor in your vote, that though I first asked you to consider, instead of voting to stay virtual for an entire quarter, that you asked to re-vote at the mid-quarter point. I know our district is not the same as others. We are a city-school district with PDE reporting 74.5% district poverty. I get it, we're in recovery, navigating a national pandemic with insufficient tools and funds to truly support our students, teachers, and staff, which is why in November, we still don't have a full district support for, um, district support for technology with all the students. What I ask you to consider tonight when making your decision is how many students are truant and that teachers have been unable to get a hold of after multiple attempts since the beginning of the school year, not completing one assignment? High school may be great, but I can tell you, I sit in earshot of both my daughter's lives, and it's the same ten to fifteen students in a class out of twenty-four to twenty-six kids in that life. How many students have left the district since entering virtual to enroll in cyber school, affecting our school's finances that are already hurting? How do the numbers of meals given out since COVID compare to those that regularly, are regularly consumed during the school year? To let you know how many students probably are still not being fed. I also ask, if laying off the pairs wasn't financially based, why can't pairs be brought back to assist teachers, parents, students, who may be struggling with technology? Conduct enrichment sessions or study halls for those students who have a parent such as myself to help, but are still receiving sixties on Apex tests? Yes, sixties, my eleven-year-old sixth-grade student is. My children deserve more than a pre-recorded ten-to-twenty-minute lesson for their specials every six days, while elementary schools' lives aren't even being happening, aren't even happening for specials such as music, art, and gym. And why is four and a half hours a week an acceptable amount of live teaching in our elementary schools as districts such as Valley View and Dallas are live all day? In fact, I encourage the district to develop an enrichment subject for students such as mine that are often done with their work by twelve, sometimes even 11 a.m., when they start at nine. Also, I am concerned about our mental health and well-being of our students. I ask that you develop a mental and well-being virtual program for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
That is it for our public speakers.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 8th, 2020?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second? I'll second. Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr. On the question, sorry, I apologize. On the question, anyone? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Thank you. Uh, budget and finance. Sorry, this is just opening up here. We will have a motion to approve the Plan Con K for the 2019 GO Bonds and submission to PDE. So moved. May I have a second?
I'll second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Thank you. We will have B9. We will have a motion to approve the proposal for appraisal services from Valbridge Property Advisors. The financial impact is $6,000. This appraisal is to develop a market value opinion on 1,000 North South Road as of 8/1/2019 to 1/1/2021. The report provides guidance in connection with the property tax appeal. Current appraisal presented by property owner is 2.4 million to 2.5 million below implied market value based on the county's assessment, potential of approximately $35,000 per year in revenue. So moved. May I have a second? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
B10. We have a motion to approve the forgiveness of delinquent school district properties on the following land bank-owned property, 1146 Luzern Street. The total, uh, delinquent school district taxes are $1,143.11. And as we learned earlier this evening, the property is part of a redevelopment and improvement project by Neighbor Works Northeast, PA. So moved. Have a second?
I'll second.
Any major question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Thank you. Uh, we have nothing under Community Relations this evening. Education, D2. We have a motion to approve the decision for the district to remain in remote learning due to the county's substantial status by the Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education. In addition, the motion authorizes the superintendent to enact the Hybrid Phase-In Plan, the Hybrid Health and Safety Plan, and the Hybrid Academic Addendum after a minimum of two consecutive moderate levels of COVID community transmission. So moved. May I have a second?
One second.
On the question?
Um, on the question, Mr. General Laza, could you review the information, um, you provided to us today about, um, uh, where Scranton is, um, in comparison to the other municipalities within the county?
Sure. Uh, Lackawanna County wide has 3,000, 3,800, as of today's statistics, 3,875 cases. Uh, Scranton, our city, out of that county count, has 1,684 of those. That comprises of 43%. Uh, I did a breakdown by zip code on the, the amount of active cases. Now, some of these codes do go into other municipalities. So, uh, I did do a breakdown of the 18503 with 31 cases, 18504, 248 cases, 18505, 476 cases, uh, 18508, 220 cases, 18509, 173 cases, 18510, 980 cases, and 18512, 152.
So in short, the city of Scranton is what's driving, um, the hot, the high number of cases in Lackawanna County?
Forty, it makes up 43% of the entire Lackawanna County cases, yes.
Thank you.
On the question, um, I just, maybe just food for thought if, if we don't have any answers today, but I know, um, Mrs. King had brought, brought up about supplies and things like that. And, um, I'm just wondering, you know, in certain school districts, you see the Plexiglas on the desks for the teachers. Um, I'm wondering, you know, are the desks going to be three feet? Are they going to be six feet apart? Um, if a student is dropped off ill, I know there's a phrase for it, I won't use it, but if a student, you know, a parent has to go to work and they give their children Motrin to lower their temperature to go to school, um, is there, what do we do with that child if they do have a temp and the parent can't get there? Is, is there a plan in place where that child would be? Um, if a, if a student is a Group A or a Group B and a, uh, one of our ELL parents that don't speak English or, or they forget, if a student is dropped off and they're a part of Group B, but it's a Group A day, where does, where does that student, is that student housed in a specific room to avoid crossing over? Are there anything, are there things like that being built into the plan? Um, those are just some things that kind of I've been going over in my head, trying, while I've been reading through the hybrid model.
Well, Director Dempsey, I, I'm trying to write them down here as you're...
I'm sorry.
Tell you what I can have, uh, what I have answers to and what I don't. Uh, as far as Plexiglas on every desk, no, we are not having that, um, at, at every teacher's desk. Um, there is, every building, every principal, um, was directed to have a quarantine room section, whatever that may call, uh, for students that may be showing, uh, symptoms of COVID. Um, and those students would be in that room until they were picked up. Uh, I apologize, I don't know what your third question was. I was trying to write it down.
No, I'm sorry, I was going kind of fast. Um, so that kind of hit on, on two of my, my questions about where those students would go. And I would imagine if, if a student, for example, is dropped off, dropped off accidentally, if they're a Group B meant there for Thursday, Friday, and the parent, in the beginning, I think kinks will be worked out, but in the beginning, if a Group B is dropped off during a Group A day, um, is there, do they need to be quarantined? Or are they just kind of held in the office until the parent can come get them?
So with any situation, if a groups, if a Group B student, we're, we will definitely have situations like that, there's no doubt about it. Uh, if the student is in Group B, but it's a Group A day, and they're not showing any signs of COVID, then of course, we would, um, we would make accommodations for them for that day. There's no reason, you know, obviously, we would make a phone call to the parent if the parent was unavailable and they weren't showing any signs. Of course, we would accommodate that parent for that day. We would go over the schedule and move forward. There would be no sense in quarantining somebody if they didn't have signs or symptoms. Um, uh, so that would be, and again, I'm going, some of this, uh, that issue, we haven't talked about, but that's my initial answer to you. And I believe that everybody, you know, because we will already have less students, I believe that we will be able to accommodate, uh, those students. Because remember, all of our teachers will be reporting. So I'm assuming if we can socially distance and place that student, whatever grade level they were in, if they were in the high school, they would just follow their own schedule, uh, as long as we can social distance. If we're in, uh, the elementary school, then we, hopefully, one of the teachers within that grade level would be able to accommodate that student.
Okay. Um, and then in terms of, you know, this is probably more important for the intermediate and high school levels. Um, are, do we have supplies like Clorox wipes and things like that for the teachers to clean their desks in between classes? Um, I, I know it's probably not feasible to spray them down um, with, with the backpacks in between individual classes, but are teachers being supplied with that? Or is that something they have to purchase?
Uh, I'm, I do not know the answer as far as Clorox wipes. I do not know...
Or any type of anti, yeah, Lysol or anything like that for the, the desks.
I, I, I wouldn't know. Paul, do we have Clorox wipes or anything that we would be able to provide the teachers if they wanted to, uh, clean their desk in between classes?
Yeah, this is a conversation we've actually been having. It, it won't be wipes. It'll more likely be paper towels and, and sanitizer and a spray bottle. But yes, we're gonna have sanitizer available. But, uh, I mean, trying to find Clorox wipes, the volume we would need is, is almost an impossibility.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak directly about wipes, but just any type of anti, like, I know Lysol does the trick too, but yeah.
Yeah. And Mrs. Dempsey, you did ask about the desks.[1647.71] And Mrs. Dempsey, you did ask about the desks, the desks we are getting six feet apart.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you very much for that, I forgot about that. And then this is kind of on the opposite end for teachers and students in the hybrid model in terms of office hours. Is there, has there been any talk about how to, what the breakdown might look like? Will students have access to their teachers if they're a Group A student and, or I'm sorry, if they're a Group B student and they're home on a Monday or a Tuesday? Will the teachers will obviously be in front of students for their 8:00 to 3:00, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. school day? Will there be office hours or is there any type of discussion around if a student needs to reach out to their teacher during the school day? Or is it, is it just kind of something that's in flux right now?
So I can answer the one issue with regards to, because this, I believe, will sort of answer part of your question. The other question, as far as office hours, I'm going to refer to Paul and Ann. But as far as instruction in the hybrid setting, one of the things that must happen is all new material that's introduced to students, whether they're face-to-face or in a virtual environment, must be live. And when I say that, a teacher can choose to do that live and record it if the student is at, is in a hybrid, is at home, but all new material must be live and recorded. Now, as far as office hours, Paul and Ann, can either of you address that and how we are going to handle that? Because they will have students in front of them all day. So the schedule will obviously be different than what we're looking at right now where the office hours at the end of the day, where teachers are addressing that. So Paul and Ann, have you discussed that?
Yeah, and Director Dempsey, your questions are on point, they're outstanding questions. No, no, they're excellent, because there are a lot of the same conversations we've been, we've been having. Our conversations in our Thursday meeting, and Rosemary alluded to it with both unions and some representatives from some other school districts, has really revolved around a lot of these things, cleaning and sanitizing, but also specifically, how do we deliver instruction? Because really, delivering instruction in hybrid is probably more challenging than being fully virtual. And I don't have a definitive answer to your question, other than this is why we're meeting. In fact, we've, we're forming even a smaller subcommittee out of this group that we've been meeting with of teachers and administrators to really hammer out a plan, to make sure that everyone knows what it looks like, all of our stakeholders, so our teaching staff, our administrators, and most importantly, our students and families know what it's going to look like when we are able to get back in time.
But it's not going to answer your question, the office hours that are available right now, it's not possible. Because the teacher can't be in front of kids all day and have an hour and a half of our office hours, that's not possible.
Right.
So how do we, how do we provide that time is something that we need to, you know, figure out, but it's not going to look like it does right now, to answer your question.
No, and I'm.
It's not possible.
Right, and thank you, Paul, because that, it's good to know that you're working with, you know, Rosemary and the teachers to figure, to figure it out. Because I, that's, those are just some things that I, you know, I look at the structure of my kid's day today and I'm thinking, okay, if we go hybrid and, you know, my son has a question or an issue or, you know, right now, he has his Google Meet or, you know, he knows when his sessions are planned or he has office hours that he can reach out to his teachers. And so I appreciate that, that is being thought of.
The one thing that, the one thing that, the one thing that teachers are going to have to be very creative, remember Wednesday is our virtual.
Right.
It's our virtual day. So a lot of those questions, that day is going to be centered around a lot of speaking with groups of students, figuring out who's struggling with what, and they're going to have to be very creative. And that's going to be really a day where, I don't want to say that they're not available on Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, but that's going to be, I'm assuming, the majority of the time when those issues are addressed.
That makes sense, yeah.
And we're also meeting with our grade level team. So Mr. Doherty's meeting with secondary principals and I'm meeting with elementary, and we're going through must haves on our checklist for things that we need to make sure are happening. I know some of the public comment talked about what does every minute of the day look like? Well, right now, we're trying to structure the environment with transitions in hallways and grabbing breakfast and going to your rooms. You know, what's cleaning is taking place when kids are entering the school and then when kids are in classrooms. But teachers will have their prep periods just as they normally would. So if they received an email, you know, and if they were able to send an email back or make a phone call back, just like they would if it were a traditional school day, I would, I could foresee that happening. And as Ms. McTiernan said, Wednesday is going to be a great day to really have that opportunity to reach out in depth and answer questions, talk to parents, provide support for students. So I see it happening on a different scale, but sort of similar to what's happening now, except the schedule would be different. They would be following their normal school day schedule and then reaching out to parents as they normally would when kids are normally in school, when they have the time to do so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, no, I appreciate that, thank you, yes.
No, I touched, I think during the work session, on that idea of the Frequently Asked Questions document that we had discussed when we were having this discussion back in August. And I did take a look through some emails and honestly, I think the hybrid plan as it stands now addresses many of the concerns that had been shared at that time. I think the better understanding of COVID as a whole and other directions that have come from PDE have helped to address many of those issues. But as I'm listening, Paul and Ann, to you talking about these weekly meetings, do you, you know, and certainly I don't want to take it upon myself, I'd like consensus from my colleagues and your thoughts as well, but do you think it would be possible to share some updates? You know, I think as Michelle is asking these questions and Paul, you're saying, yeah, yeah, this is what we talked about. If it might be possible to offer, you know, a bi-weekly, as realistic, few bullet points of, here are some things we discussed, here are some solutions we arrived at, and here are some challenges we're still trying to work through. You know, I certainly would leave it up to all of you if my colleagues think this is something that might be helpful. I would leave it up to all of you to define exactly what that would look like and what a realistic timeline might be. But it, I think it might be helpful if everyone knew that this conversation is ongoing. No matter what we put on paper, the reality of opening these schools on any given day at any given time while we are still operating under the cloud of COVID, we can't create a roadmap for that. We can simply put a framework into place and know that we have systems that are going to help us react to the challenges we'll face. But there is absolutely no way that we can know what every moment of every day is going to look like. But I think if at least we can ensure parents and teachers and the community at large that we are continuing to work through those things and troubleshoot those issues as they come at us, that might instill some added confidence.
I'm sorry, I have, this is not really a question, just something that I know I've asked in the past and I was just hoping we could reiterate it again for the public, that there have been questions about uniform policy and I think we discussed it publicly or, I know I asked, can't remember what capacity, but I know that uniform policy is still in place, there is no change. If and when we go back to a hybrid setting, we will still be requiring uniforms, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
On the question, quite candidly, I don't know if we're ready for hybrid. I don't know if virtual's maybe smarter and safer, I don't know. But I'm encouraged by the fact that, as I understand the hybrid plan, we would have to go two weeks of moderate in a row, which would take us to Thanksgiving, so it wouldn't happen then. So there'd be another week for planning and preparation and fine tuning. And I also understand, and this is what gives me the most comfort, and please, Superintendent McTiernan or any administrator who thinks what I'm about to say is incorrect, please let me know. If we were to go hybrid, is the hybrid situation then still an election to be made by the parents?
You are absolutely correct, Mr. Director Malloy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On the question? Am I mute?
No.
On the question, I'm sure like most of you, hearing both in public comment tonight and in emails and conversations, that half the people want to come back in hybrid as soon as they possibly can, and a lot of people are very concerned that virtual is very, is to be preferred and that, I think that whatever decision we ultimately make, it will not please anybody and hopefully, it will please some of the people. It won't please everybody, but we need it to please some people. My feeling is, is that hybrid plan the district has put the work into is as complete as it can be. And that until we road test it, we're not going to find out where the noisy engine and where the flat tires are. But what comforts me is a conversation that I was part of earlier, which is that it is eminently amendable. That if we come across situations that aren't working well, we as a board can be, the administration can identify them, they can come to us as a board, and we can amend the hybrid plan without great difficulty. It's not going to require huge amounts. And hopefully, by fine tuning it, it's going to work. I agree with Director Malloy. I personally can't see us getting two weeks of moderate, then two to three weeks of the rollout of the plan successfully completed, given Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's and everything else, plus the growing numbers. But I want to say, I think that the plan that's been devised is an excellent one. I hope we can get to it soon, but I think we as a board have to know that we will not please everybody and we just have to hope we please some of them. And that the plan is amendable and we will be listening to people's opinions as to what's working and what isn't working.
On the question, I guess the first one is, so we say after two weeks moderate, we would then, you know, make the move to hybrid. What would be the timeframe? Would it be the next day following Monday or would it be like a week or two of, you know, making sure everything's ready to go? Or, you know, is it, now Monday comes, we're in moderate and then we're going right into next week?
Well, I think again, as we've discussed, it's timing. So I'm just going to use, for example, where we are today. So we're in substantial this week. Let's say a great scenario happens and next week, we're in moderate. So I believe the date is the ninth. Then we need another week of moderate, which would be the 16th. Then we certainly would never start. And then we go for a week and we go into, we certainly wouldn't start right after that because that would be Thanksgiving week. So to answer your question, Director McCandrew, to say a week, I can't answer that right now because it's timing. So I have to wait, I have to analyze the situation if that's how the board chooses to vote tonight and then make a decision. And basically, it's going to be centered around the two moderates, but also the timing of the major holidays. I certainly wouldn't want to bring kids back for three days and then have them go on a break again to only start over again. That's very confusing for kids and not fair. So I need to give them consistency also. So if the timing isn't right, also, we can get to moderates and remember, the decision isn't made until the following Monday. We could see a spike again during that moderate week that could end us, end us back into substantial again. I'm not going to bring kids back if we're in the middle of a spike. So I'm not really sure that I can give you a concrete answer. I think we have to continue as we are right now. I mean, we're following the statistics on a weekly basis. We've been able to determine normally by Tuesday or Wednesday if we're going to be in moderate or substantial for the following week based on the trends. So it's hard for me to give you an answer right now. I think the best case scenario I can say is, based on timing, based on holidays, based on watching the numbers, then being fair to the kids and being able, if I can get back, if I can get them back before the Christmas holiday and I have three weeks in between, I think that's great. But I'm not going to bring them back a week and a half before that.
Right, so even if we're not rushing it, we're still going to wait to see, okay?
Exactly, yes.
That's a lot of concerns. And then for any employees or teachers who are at high risk, you know, do have some fears about, you know, going back in the building, you know, what would be an option for them?
So they need to, they need to contact the Human Resource Office and depending on, you know, what their concern is, then we would deal with that issue or what their, you know, medical issue may be. But that would be, their first call would be to Mr. Castrovenci with what the scenario is. And then whatever that scenario is, we would determine where we need to go with the district and what the decision would be for that employee.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just briefly on the question again, Superintendent McKinnon, I've been watching Canada and they had their Thanksgiving four weeks ago. Two weeks after their Thanksgiving, they had a spike which is continuing to go up. All of the evidence appears to be that the major source of spread seems to be coming a large amount now from small family gatherings. People have relaxed their bubbles a bit, people are gathering. I would think that it would be very unlikely that we would not see a similar spike, a two-week trailing spike after Thanksgiving and probably a two-week trailing spike after Christmas. And I think it would be very wise for us, as you said, just to reinforce the point you made, that just one swallow does not a spring make and one moderate does not a leap to action make. Because I do believe that we will see resurgent spikes after the two family holidays coming up, based on that evidence.
I agree with you, Director Human. I believe that, you know, I think, I'm hopeful that this board is confident that this administration has shown since day one that our number one priority is the health, safety and welfare of our students and our staff. We'll continue to make decisions that surround, around that theme. So we will not, you know, we will not force this issue if the timing's not right.
With great confidence, Superintendent McKinnon, that that will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I probably should point out, based upon what you just said, Superintendent McTiernan, that I agree with you. And I know sometimes some people, including myself, think we got a little too self-congratulatory on these, but you have done a great job and the plan is great. It just comes back to me, for me, it comes down to trying to keep within the parent's purview as much agency as we can, which is why, I know I'm a parent of one, I'm not a parent of four or five, I may have a different perspective on this than someone else, which is why I'm so glad that the, that if hybrid were to move forward, that it would be elective rather than compulsory. So, thank you.
True. Thank you.
Terms of that, I think, you know, and sort of touching on Sean's line of questioning as well, if, say, we go back, you know, it's, we've made the decision, you've made the decision, we know it's going to begin on whatever the date is, and a parent says, I'm not in a position to do this at this time, I want to do it two weeks after that date, one month after that date. Are there parameters around that or is there some flexibility in it?
You know, we've spoke to some other districts about how they handled this and I really think the couple that we have, what they did is, the district made a decision. And again, remember, when we make the decision, it's not going to be the next day. So there's going to be time from the decision made and then the process and then the phase-in dates. So this is going to be a process, number one. There's going to be, I believe at this point, there will be a time where we say, maybe, again, I'm just throwing something out there, 10 days to two weeks where the parent has to make a decision and then they would stay in it for the rest of the quarter. This is some success that we've seen with the, with other districts. And then at the end of the quarter, they could reevaluate. So we would give the parent, let's say, two weeks. In that two-week timeframe, the parent would need to decide if they're going to go hybrid or stay virtual. Then if they change their mind within that two-week period, that would be okay. But after that two-week period, they would have to stay and remain in their choice after the two-week period.
Thank you. I do think we have two other items we need to touch on in general here. The CTC students, as part of our virtual plan, those students were still being transported to CTC and were participating in their programs in the hybrid model. And I think we just need to make sure that everyone is comfortable continuing that. Mr. Audi and I did discuss this earlier today to make sure we were having that discussion properly. And you feel as though because this was part of our virtual plan, we don't need to make any, we don't need to take any other action to that end. We just confirm that we are comfortable continuing.
That is, that's my recommendation and belief, yes.
And we do have consensus that the CTC students can continue if CTC moves back to a hybrid model at this time?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. And Dr. Batic, I believe there were some changes to some of the special education programs and some of our English language learners. Can you touch on that a little bit, please?
Sure. Good evening, Director Gilmartin and everyone else. Just a couple of things I'd like to mention. We had hoped, the Department of Special Education, as well as, I feel comfortable speaking for the Department of English Language Learning, we had hoped to bring the students back at a rate of four days per week. Certain groups of students with each of those departments, in particular in special education, we were looking at students who receive, who are, receive services under supplemental or full-time eligibility category and in terms of servicing, and students who are non-English speaking for those in the English Language Learning Department. However, there have been a few concerns that have arisen lately that have caused pause and we have changed course a little bit. And we've decided, at least temporarily, when we go back, if we go, when we go back, not if, but when we go back on the, under a hybrid model, we will come back two days per week along with the general education population. So that would be all students receiving special education services and all students receiving English language learning services. And the reason for that really is twofold, although there are some sort of subcategories under each. The first are health and safety concerns, that being space, as some of our classrooms are quite confined in certain buildings. And so there's a lot of concern because we have students who, because of the nature of their disability, cannot be expected reasonably to wear masks all day. It's just not, it's just not realistic for us to expect students to do that, which causes, you know, some cause for concern with. um, which causes, you know, some cause for concern with, uh, the staff and all the support personnel. Uh, in addition, there are issues regarding, um, the, uh, six feet of social distancing in those confined spaces. So then we have sort of a, a double whammy of kids not wearing masks and people not being able to be six feet apart. And in some classrooms, I, I think you would struggle to even reach three feet apart, uh, with the teachers and the support personnel in the classrooms. Um, and under that, um, category as well as the consideration of PPE, we have learned that, uh, PPE is actually being used at a faster rate than, than I had predicted anyway. I don't want to speak for everybody else. But having placed, and, and I will make a quick correction. A, a speaker earlier this evening referenced that we have 50 PCA's in the home. And that is, um, absolutely incorrect. We have 17 PCA's in the home right now. So I, I think that's worth mentioning since that's a dramatic difference. Um, but nonetheless, those, uh, PCA's who've gone into the home, we've had many ask for replenishment of supplies after one week, and we had given them supplies for what we thought would be a month. So that gives me some concern regarding PPE and, and making sure that we have enough to, um, sustain, um, our needs over a long period of time. And then secondly, we have, um, staffing concerns, which I know have been mentioned in the past. Um, but they have, they have become more, um, serious and more in the forefront for me. We continue to lose and, and some of the speakers mentioned this, this evening, and I know, uh, Rosemary Bolin mentioned it in the past and, and she's alluded to it, um, as recent as this evening. We have lost, um, staff to other districts. That is a reality with which we are currently faced. We have had difficulty replacing some of the, um, teachers we lost and good teachers. I, I'm, I'm sad to have seen some of them go. And so with those losses, it's becoming increasingly difficult to staff our buildings in anticipation of returning to school and under a virtual model. And then when we combine the threat of staff not coming in because of medical concerns, whether they be pre-existing conditions or, um, fears for family members or someone else in their home who, who has, um, a vulnerability or, uh, to illness. When we consider all of that, it's, it just makes me extremely uncertain as to whether or not we'll be able to staff our classrooms. And with special education in particular, we cannot have uncertified people covered in those classrooms. So because of those reasons, special education really was forced to move into the direction of coming back two days per week as opposed to four. Our hope and goal would be to increase that, um, once we have an opportunity to see how things go and if we're able to, um, adequately meet the needs, health and safety needs of our students as well as staffing. So that's where we are right now. And, uh, the Department of English Language Learners has, uh, worked in tandem with special education because we have several students who receive services through both departments. So we're working together on that. So I hope that answered your question.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I, I, I do have a question, um, especially with all the holidays coming up and, you know, it's such a hectic time out there. Could we make maybe like a friendly amendment where we say, you know, if we do go hybrid, we don't start any sooner than beginning the new year? That way we make sure we're moderate for a while, you know, the holidays, people aren't sitting there waiting like, oh, we might go back in a week or two. Kind of give everybody a little bit of, uh, a little ease that we know, you know, no, no sooner than like, say, January 1st, or sorry, January 2nd. We, if as long as the numbers are still moderate, we, we phase it in.
I, I mean, I am of the opinion that our motion does cover that. I, I know not pinning down a specific date is a little bit different, but I, I really do feel that with the conversation we've had tonight, I think it's pretty clear that is realistic to assume that it will not be, be before the Christmas holiday break. But I certainly wouldn't want to pin up, you know, I've, I am not a, certainly not a Pollyanna anymore, if ever, but you know, hope springs eternal, I guess. And, you know, should we have some sort of miracle on our hands, whether it is, uh, to deal with COVID or just very good news in our own community, I, I would hate to see us backed in to a corner. But, you know, I think we've, I think we've made it very clear tonight that we will give ample notice. And I think we're all pretty realistic individuals to realize that it probably is not likely that we'll be returning to two consecutive weeks of moderate spread in, in any short order.
Director Gil Martin, this is Sharon Batic. Can I add really one quick sentence? Because I forgot to say something and I should have, and I thought about it and then it escaped my mind. I just want to extend my appreciation to all the PCA's, the 17, who have gone into the homes. Because they are taking a risk. They are, and, and I acknowledge that. And they have been gracious about it. And the parents have been extremely appreciative. And I have received quite a bit of very positive feedback from many of the PCA's themselves and from the parents. So from myself and my department, and I'm sure I can speak for the whole administration, we are very appreciative to those people who were willing to do that. So thank you to them and thank you for allowing me to say that.
Of course. Thank you, Sharon.
Do we have anything else on question for the hybrid model?
Yes, on the question, um, Superintendent McTiernan, say for instance, we do go back to hy, go to hybrid, um, at a time that we are in moderate, but then we start to go back, the numbers start to rise, we go to substantial again, would we then go back to virtual?
Well, the, the recommendations from the Department of Health and PDE are just as the same as to go back to moderate, you need two moderates in a row to consider going back. So it would be the same, two substantials in a row to go back to remote. So I believe that once we make the decision to go hybrid, and again, timing is everything, um, that we would watch just as all the other districts are. And if we were, we were in a substantial week and we were going into another substantial week, then we would move to go back to, uh, remote.
Okay. Yeah. So, so the reason why I asked, uh, Mr. Genaliza to provide us with, um, the data that he did is because I know there are, um, districts within the county who chose to remain hybrid. So there may be some wondering, well, Scranton is also in the county, why can't we go hybrid? But, um, as the data shows, I mean, we're, we're, we're not like the other municipalities. Our numbers are quite high. And so that is why I'm voting today to remain virtual, tonight to remain virtual.
Thank you. Do we have anything else?
Roll call, Mrs. McTiernan, or, no, you're just muting yourself. Okay.
I was just muting myself.
You were getting ready. Uh, Mrs. Orr, roll call, please.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes. I'm sorry. I'm so, I'm sorry. I'm on here twice. I'm having technology issues. Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Thank you. Have, sorry, I've lost my place here. A motion to approve, uh, attendance to conferences and meetings for professional development relevant to the specific needs and responsibilities of, uh, members of our staff. The financial impact is $950 as attached.
It's almost.
Second? I'll second. On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Nothing under operations this evening, personnel. We have a motion to approve assignments, appointments, retirements, leaves of absence and resignations as attached. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On the question? Mrs. Orr?
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin? Nine affirmative.
We have nothing under policy, special education. Have.
Uh.
Yes.
Did we miss policy or, or excuse me, personnel, or am I just?
We just went through that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's okay. I'm out of my other world. Sorry.
Uh, we have each one. We will have a motion to approve the Special Education Settlement Agreement, JR 3190670. Some motion?
Moot.
Seconded.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
We have nothing under vendor relation, vendor relations. Do we have any new business?
President Gil, I, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to ask this. It's kind of old business. And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot here, so maybe we would have to address it another time. But it came up in public comment today. And I guess I just need to be reminded, what, what are the obstacles that we are facing in providing a controlled environment for our parents to work with the students? I, I know at one point we talked about having them come into the school. Was it that the parents couldn't bring them in? This has come up a lot in question, so I'm just trying to go back to that so I understand what those obstacles were.
Director, uh, well, at this point, without the teacher coming into the, without the teacher being in the building, um, one of the things we ask the parent is that they, they bring their child in to get those services. And to my knowledge, and Director Batic, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, all of the parents that have the current PCA's, um, did not want to come into our buildings. They wanted the PCA to go into the home.
Correct, Superintendent McTiernan. There were really two reasons. Uh, we did contact every parent, uh, that was on the list. And, uh, the number one reason I was given was that, uh, parents were apprehensive about bringing their child into a setting where there would be many more risks associated with COVID, uh, because the numbers would of course increase, the number of people to whom they and their child were exposed would increase dramatically. If we had 30 students coming in, each of whom had a parent and a PCA, that's 90 people and 90 threats of exposure. Um, they felt more comfortable having the PCA come to their home where it's a more controlled environment where they could keep it sanitized and feel comfortable. So parents had that option. We, as the school district, could not penalize parents who did not want to bring their kids into school. We have an obligation to, to provide that service, but we cannot punish or discriminate against parents when every other student is permitted to receive programming at home. So we had to afford that same opportunity to these parents. So that was one reason. And then the second reason was that, uh, the, the parents were asked to be in the school with the child throughout the duration of the three-hour period of time that they would be supported by a PCA. And, uh, the school district does not have a responsibility for the students under loco prentice right now, uh, which is a term used to describe the responsibility of the school district to serve as the pseudo guardian for the parent and take responsibility for the health, safety and welfare of children during the school day, uh, from portal to portal, which means from the moment they leave their house to the moment they return to their home at the end of the day. And because we're on a full virtual model, we don't have that responsibility right now. So we would not be able to be responsible for those students in the school without their parents there. So those were the two reasons, but every parent was contacted and not one parent preferred to come into the school setting. They preferred to have the PCA come into their home. And again, just so that everyone understands, it's a service that we must provide. It's not an option. There's really no flexibility. It's a service that has to be provided. For PCA's who provide services that aren't required right now because we're on virtual, we lifted them out of the list. So many, many, many more students are entitled to PCA services than we are currently providing. And that's because if the barriers to education that we're addressing through PCA's are not relevant in the, under the virtual model, we didn't count them. We revised IEPs to reflect that those PCA's are only needed under a, a brick and mortar model. So I hope that makes sense to you.
Yes, thank you. That, that's very helpful. I appreciate that.
And Dr. Batic, to piggyback on that, the PCA services could not be provided virtually, correct? I mean, I think.
Correct. We, we are providing those that can be, but no, um, the, the 17 that are in the homes, it's because those 17 students, and I believe we have three that are, we're still working to fill, those students require someone present. So the, the physical proximity and assistance in learning is required physically for that particular student.
Do we have anything else for new business?
Yes, Director Gil Martin, I'd like to bring up, um, a winter sports for the board, uh, to consider. Um, or actually what is, how would the board like to proceed with winter sports? Uh, right now we have preseason workouts. We, we know that the board voted to allow fall sports to, um, end their season. And now winter sports is in preseason. Right now we do not have the, uh, student athletes, uh, conditioning. If we are going to pursue winter sports, again, as we talked about with fall sports, um, the student athletes really should have a couple of weeks of conditioning. Um, I don't, I don't agree with running right into a season without some kind of conditioning before starting the season. So I would like to know where the board stands on this, how they would like to proceed. Uh, again, when we, we've been in virtual, um, our fall, fall sports, uh, coaches did a wonderful job. Uh, there is a plan in place. I'm going to allow Mr. Genalesse to speak to that. And again, I'm just looking for how the board would like to proceed with this. I believe the actual season starts November 20th. Uh, Mr. Genalesse, would you correct me if I'm wrong?
That is correct, Mrs. McTiernan. That would be, November 20th would be two weeks this Friday, where it's the first official date for all winter sports to officially start. And like Mrs. McTiernan said, we would like to get our, our student athletes, uh, conditioned, trained before that date starts. So again, I, I think all the fall sports coaches and parents, as, uh, Mrs. McTiernan started off the meeting with the wrap-up of the, uh, awards and the tributes to the fall sports as they are wrapping up, we're, we're all thrilled and they, they were allowed to finish the season and, uh, come to that compromise. It seems like now this is coming up again as far as for the winter sports that's ready to start. And from our discussion tonight, it looks like we're going to be virtual for a little bit longer. So we would, the coaches are anxious, the principals are anxious to see where we do stand with this so that we don't fall too far behind, uh, in, in their training and for their season. So they're looking for direction to see if the conditioning would be uplifted and if they're able to start their conditioning process in preparation for the upcoming season. And the Governor Wolf's office roughly about three weeks ago, he did up the limits of capacity outdoor, which was, we were very fortunate enough to do it with finishing with the football. with the football parents and the band and the cheerleaders, which again, everyone was so appreciative that the, the board agreed to that. Now, with that same guideline, he also upped the limits for indoor, which obviously the majority, just about all the winter sports take place indoor. And what I did today is, along with the ADs and the principals, is develop a chart for all our indoor practice facilities and facilities, venues where we do hold PIA competitions. And a lot of our practice facilities do not have any seating capacity. So what I did is go off the square footage, which was also allowed on the sheet for the event and gathering capacity increase from Governor Wolf's office on, on October 9th, where we allow 25 people per thousand square feet. As you recall, before this came out on October 9th, the maximum amount for any gathering was 25. So that was up. And just about all our indoor facilities, except Scranton High's gym, is in the category of 0 to 2,000 people, which will allow you a 20% maximum capacity. That includes team, coaches, trainers, scorekeepers, and just like we did for football season, anything that's left over, tickets for parents. Scranton High's Gymnasium would fall, is the only venue that would fall between that 2,001 and 10,000 people, which only allows 15% capacity. And the chart that I developed, I think it provides more than enough room for those teams, coaches, trainers, officials, and to hand out some tickets to, to players, parents, and families. We do have the plan in place. We worked very hard in the summer with medical professionals from the community, our school personnel, our ADs. We developed a great plan, and I'm really proud to say that the fall coaches followed it to a T. And I really trust our winter coaches would do the same as far as doing a screening, temperature checks, small group activities, wearing masks when the students are idle, et cetera, et cetera. Everything that we did in the fall for, with the plan, I, I know our coaches would do for this upcoming winter season. I'm.
So I guess, I guess at this, at this time, basically, what we need to do, what, what we need to talk about is, are we going to allow them conditioning? That, that's, that's where we are right now. Are we going to allow them to move forward with conditioning?
Superintendent McTiernan?
Yes.
My thought is, you're sitting in on these meetings with the PDE and the Department of Health. You have a lot more knowledge than I do. I've got to go based on your recommendation, so I need to hear that.
Well, right now, I mean, if our kids are going to have any potential, here's how I am right now. If our kids are going to have, having been an athlete, you can't go right into a season. You can't, you can't not be in shape. So if, if, I believe that, you know, conditioning is quite different than what the season looks like being around other teams. So right now, I would like to allow our, our kids to the conditioning, the opportunity to, to run and do all of those things, so that if we do allow them to move into a season, they're ready. So that's where I am today.
Superintendent McTiernan?
Yes.
Would you mind indulging the foreigner here? And list what the actual sports are for winter sports? I don't think it includes cricket, but I'm not sure what it does include.
Yeah, it, it includes basketball, it includes wrestling, and Bert, what am I missing?
Whim dive.
Oh, swimming, swimming and diving.
Swimming and diving, okay.
And cheerleading for basketball.
Dolly bounce.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
All right, from what I'm hearing is that we may agree to conditioning tonight, but if the season starts on the 20th of November, when would we have the opportunity to decide? I, I will be perfectly frank, I am totally guided by the success we had with our fall sports, but I do believe that wrestling and basketball are both close-contact indoor sports, which are slightly different to contact outside sports. I, I will be guided by people who know a great deal more about it than I. But if we are going to start the seasons on the 20th of November, when would we have the opportunity to decide whether they participate or not?
Well, so let me, let me, so conditioning will start, then the season starts, and remember, that's the first official practice would be on the 20th. So that doesn't mean that we would be playing other teams. I, I apologize offhand, I don't know the first competition. And maybe Mr. Genalesse, do you have the first?
That's usually the first week of, you'll have scrimmages over Thanksgiving break, and the first official competitions will be the first week of December. And Director Hume, the PIA is fully behind. They're not, they're, they're going to put, they're going to put the decision in the district's hands. They're fully behind in allowing all schools to start. The only thing that I did hear from the PIA with the wrestling, they're just concerned about allowing big massive tournaments of like 20 teams to take place. Those might be canceled and replaced with simple dual meets, which it's, it's a smaller amount. When you get into a large amount of, you know, wrestling tournaments with 20-plus teams, you have, you have hundreds of kids. So that's the only thing I heard PIA is concerned about.
So, so my, my, my recommendation, I am sorry, I'm sorry.
It's just I'm saying, if we do make the decision tonight, and there are scrimmages and competitions before our next meeting in December, we're effectively saying yes. Now, having said that, I'm perfectly happy to vote for the winter sports to go ahead, because I think that the success the district had in keeping our kids safe during the fall sports. And I think that we've taken so much from our students, that, that it's a good thing to let them have this. But I just, I just am concerned that we're not making a decision just on conditioning. It, it, it would do that. And also, I'm assuming that we have provisions in place, that if it goes pear-shaped, it would be cut off without having to come back to the board.
I think the thing we need to reconcile here, though, is that when we discussed fall sports, did we not come to consensus that this was an administrative decision?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, there's, you can't have. I'm sorry, I talked over somebody there. If, if, if fall sports weren't a board decision, then winter sports aren't a board decision either.
Right.
Great. I will just add that I checked the American Academy of Pediatrics on the CDC, and they recommend sports, whether it's indoor or outdoor, with proper precautions.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think we should, you know, it's been a tough year for the kids. A lot of kids might be, it might be their last time playing sports if they're graduating, or they might be, you know, scattered by colleges. I think anything we can do to, if the parents are okay with letting their kid play, and then if the coaches are on board keeping it safe, then I agree.
Right, it's ultimately a parent decision.
Oh, I agree.
Okay. Okay. We have. Thank you. Thank you.
Else for new business?
Uh, yes. As has been stated frequently tonight, tomorrow is Election Day. For those voting in person, polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And if by chance you are still in line at 8:00 PM, do not leave, stay in line, they have to let you vote. If you're dropping off a mail-in ballot, you have until 8:00 PM. The government center is located at 123 Wyoming Avenue. And I hope you all know your voting location. I know the, the United House Apartments with the fire, that place was moved to the Cultural Center. And if you're unsure of what your location is, you can visit the Department of Elections page at lacawana county.org. So I encourage everybody to vote tomorrow.
And thank you for giving all of that information. I knew you would be thorough, thank you very much, Sarah. Ms. Laughed just earlier, and then I forgot about it. Reviewing the budget schedule, the meeting schedule over the next few weeks, if you would do that, please.
Yes, certainly. As, as we had spoken previously, we have prepared a tentative budget timeline that we were hoping to present to the board, the proposed final budget for your review at a Budget and Finance Committee meeting on November 9th. We would like that same evening to have a special meeting to adopt the proposed final budget, if there are no questions. And I'll, obviously, I'll be able to, happy to answer them that evening. We are also thinking potentially on November 18th, if Dr. Finan were to hold a recovery meeting, we can review the proposed final budget with the Recovery Task Force, and also allow that to also operate a, a public hearing following the recovery meeting on, on the budget. With those two dates suggested, that would allow the, the board to vote to approve the 2021 general fund budget as early as December 9th. It has to be on public display for 30 days, but the board can then, you know, take, uh, hope to pass this budget as early as December 9th.
And just to add, we will, I will schedule that meeting for November 18th from 3:00 to 4:00 tomorrow. So that invitation will go out. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything else for business? Well, believe it or not, it was a year ago at our November meeting that Mrs. McTiernan was appointed superintendent of the Scranton School District. So I suppose congratulations are, are in order. I'm not sure if that's exactly the, the right term, but as I often joke, I do believe your superintendent years should be measured in dog years. So I think I can speak for everyone to say thank you very much for your leadership, your commitment, your stick-to-it-iveness. It's sort of, it's really remarkable, and I think you have brought together an incredible team and, and led them beautifully. So thank you very much for that. And I have to thank Ms. Fox for stepping into her role as Vice President. It was certainly a wild year, to say the least. It has, it, it has been an honor to work alongside you, and I know I tell you all the time, you make me miss my, what are you, 28 now? My, my 28-year-old brain desperately. I am constantly impressed with your work ethic and your quick, quick wit and quick, quick thinking and, and your, your hard work and determination. So thank you very much. And thank you to all of you. This is really the last, this is, although we'll be together many times in the next few weeks, this is really my last opportunity to address all of you. It has been, as I said, a wild ride. I could not have imagined where we would be in this year, all of the challenges we would face, all of the, the new people I would get. Well, some, some old friends who joined us and some new friends who've come aboard. So, you know, it certainly has been, has been really interesting to see this evolve and really see a, a group of people come together who I think are, are working well together, challenging each other, respecting each other, having great conversations and, you know, in the, in the vein of not trying to be too self-congratulatory, I, I certainly think that our, the hard work in this district extends beyond all the faces that you see at these virtual meetings. It certainly is, is in our, our classrooms, whether they're virtual or in-person in each of our buildings and, and in the homes of our, our students with the support of their parents and this community. So thank you all very much. It has really been my honor to serve in this role. It would certainly be my honor to continue, should you see fit that, that I am the person you would like to, to see in this position going forward. And it would, my privilege to continue to have Ms. Fox by my side. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting and again, reiterate, vote, 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 most important thing you can do.
Director Gilmore, and I, I don't want to prolong this, but I just want to say thank you, because the, the hours that, that nobody sees that you put in. So, and, and they don't, they have no idea. I mean, there's, and, and the amount of times where I say, hey, could you just get on a, a meeting for a minute? And it's two hours later. So nobody sees that. I appreciate it. It's funny that it's only been a year, it feels like 10. But I appreciate, and I appreciate, appreciate everybody giving me the opportunity to serve as superintendent in this district. I'm, I'm really happy with the direction that we're headed and the support that all of you have given me this year. I, I can't thank you enough, but really, you need to be commended, because I, I do laugh every time somebody says the amount of money that all of you make to sit on the board, if only they knew that you do this, and all of you do this because you want to do it for, to make this school district the best that it could possibly be. So thank you to all of you, but thank you really, Director Gilmore, and thank you for the amount of time that you put in with all of us. It's unbelievable.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate it.
Sorry, I'm, I, I know I'm on here twice, so I apologize again for that. I don't want to over, I'm having such a hard time with this tonight. But yes, we cannot end the meeting like that without somebody missing. Thank you for your kind words towards Katie, so I'm talking to one screen and looking at another. We would be completely lost without you and your knowledge. As, you know, we're all here aware that we're all very new to this. It has been crazy times. We did not expect to, I'm sure none of us expected to sit on a board such as this, but it is a wonderful board. We are all learning day by day, and without your knowledge and your experience, we wouldn't know how to do this. And so you are definitely an asset to the Scranton School Board and the Scranton School District. So we definitely, I mean, I'm not looking to speak for everybody else, but I'm, I'm sure I'm not alone in saying that we appreciate you and the time you put in and the effort that you've given. You care tremendously, and it shows every day with what you do, so thank you. And it's been a pleasure serving next to you. Thank you so much, and we shall see what is next.
Yes, we shall.
I would like to just thank everyone, because when I first arrived in the district, board meetings were not like this. I, I have to tell you, I was horrified at my first board meeting. I'm no longer horrified. And the challenges that you have had to overcome, to solve the problems to solve, and the frank and honest discussions that you have had among yourselves is, is and has been refreshing throughout this year. It's been a very challenging year, no matter whether you've never had experience or you've had 50 years of experience. It's just not been a normal year. But you, as a board, have united, and you are solid, and I am so proud of the work and the time that you put in. And I can't thank you enough, because you made my life a lot easier. That first meeting, I wanted to run away, so I no longer want to run away. I thank you, and it really does have to do, it all comes back to leadership. And on that note, vote.
Beautifully said.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Okay. Everybody. May I have that motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All second.
All in favor?